This meeting will come to order. This is a special session of the Bloomington Common Council for Tuesday, April 7th, 2020. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Councilmember Rallo?
Please unmute. Sure muted. Councilor Rallo, are you here?
He's not muted, but I don't think he's connected to the audio.
He's not.
There we go.
Councilor Rallo, are you present?
I'm here.
Okay, I'll count.
You just say yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Scambaluri?
Here.
Councilmember Rosenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Sims?
Here.
Councilmember Volin? Is there a lag?
Yeah, there's a lag. Say my name slower.
Volin?
I'm here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Thank you.
We have a quorum and everyone is present. And summarizing the agenda, I will note that in performing my duty under Bloomington Municipal Code 2.04.270 to approve meeting agendas, I have determined that the items on tonight's agenda are essential matters, critical to the operation of city government. We will be hearing reports from council members, reports particularly an update on the crisis from the mayor and city offices and from council committees. We will go to legislation for second reading and resolutions, which includes appropriation ordinance 2001 to specially appropriate from the food and beverage tax fund expenditures related to the convention center expansion and support of local tourism during the COVID-19 emergency. We will go to legislation for first reading and resolutions, which includes ordinance 2009 to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel and to grant authority to act in accordance with declared disaster emergencies regarding amending BMC 2.22.030 entitled Employee Policies and complying with the State of Indiana's Declaration of Disaster Emergency under Indiana Code Section 10, 14, 3, 12. We'll take up matters of the council schedule and then we will adjourn. We'll start now with reports from council members. I will ask members to speak in the order as I see them on my screen, starting with Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. No report now, but I will have an update on Hopkins for committee reports.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Councilmember Smith?
I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I just want to say that it's absolutely outrageous and shameful that the Supreme Court did not extend absentee voting in the state of Wisconsin and that Republicans on the federal level are not making it easy to vote in this time of a health crisis. Regardless of political affiliation, we all live in a democracy. We, anybody who is elected has sworn to uphold that democratic process and it's outrageous that it's being subverted and limited and people are being disenfranchised because they have to choose between their health and going out to vote.
Thank you, Councilwoman Piedmont Smith. Councilmember Flaherty?
No report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Flaherty. Councilwoman Sims?
No report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sims. Councilwoman Scambaluri?
Thank you. I just want to express my appreciation to those who joined my constituent meeting this past Saturday. It was free of Zoom bombs and completely free of glitches. So thank you to those who rolled with that. The next one, our next constituent meeting is set for the first Saturday in May. And assuming we're all still under our restrictions, it'll be done by Zoom. If not, we'll have a chance to meet in person again, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Scambaluri. Councilmember Rosenberg?
Hi, thanks. I just have one quick thing. So the Cascade Park, Cascade Park has the road closed right now and it's a really great place to go if you want physical distance and be outside. I know the B line can be pretty crowded and it's hard to keep six feet. So if you're looking for a place to be outside, it's great because you have an entire road closed now for just bikes and pedestrians. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenberg. Councilor Rallo?
I have no report, but I may have some remarks to follow up on the mayor's report.
I'm sure there'll be a Q and A after the mayor reports. Thank you. I have no report. We will go directly into a report, an update on the crisis response from Mayor Hamilton and city offices. Mayor Hamilton, would you please proceed?
All right, have I successfully unmuted myself?
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, good. Thank you, Stephen. It is nice to be with you all again virtually as we continue our marathon beginning with a sprint as we are dealing with the coronavirus pandemic and health emergency. I will say again, you know, we have weeks of challenge ahead of us. It's going to get harder before it gets easier, worse before it gets better. But we know we will get through this and we know we are doing all we can together to make that path as passable and as least threatening as we can. So I'll report again, the collaborations are very strong and very good. We have three times a week meetings that continue between mayor, county commissioner, IU health leadership, county health leadership, Indiana University, emergency management and others to coordinate all that is going on. That also includes the Friday afternoon weekly press conference at 1:15 that I encourage anybody to participate in and watch if you'd like to. Also, you can send in questions. Most of the live questions are by media who are attending that event. You'll hear tonight also briefly from the two task forces that are set up kind of outside the health lane, if you will, from Beverly Calendar Anderson on social services work, in particular, a lot of work lately on housing to update you on what we're doing together as a community to deal with some of the housing challenges that are part of this. You'll also hear from Alex Crowley from the Economic Stabilization and Recovery Group about what they're doing. I know you'll hear more from him tonight, of course, about the food and beverage investments that we're asking you to approve as well. Some things about some softer services, non-monetary from the mill. Great thing MAP 39 Degrees North has helped set up and a number of other things going on with both of those task forces, so you'll hear those. I will generally say how much we appreciate and I encourage your support for both of these efforts, in particular for the financial side of the economic stabilization recovery and also what I expect will be economic side, finance side of the social services, not tonight, but eventually. And encourage you to make those decisions to support the financial resources that are appropriate as you see fit, but also to allow the administration and the assembled teams to engage quickly and efficiently with those resources with full transparency and accountability, but to assure that we can get those resources to the people that need it under the plans that are articulated in a very expeditious and efficient way. We look forward to your help in setting that up that way to meet these emergency needs, which we know are so pressing. I wanted to give a quick update on the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act. That's the federal act that included, I mentioned last time, that includes some leave provisions for city workers. I just wanted you to know of the 700 city workers, we've had as of noon today, 23 specific inquiries from employees about either that two-week off or that 12-week family medical leave with partial pay. So it hasn't been a flood, but it's also been appreciated by a couple dozen inquiries. I also wanted to note tonight, of course, we continue to follow the health professionalist advice. That advice changed late last week with regard to masks. I'm sure you're all aware of that from the CDC, from the World Health Organization, from Monroe County Health and State Department of Health. As the evidence mounted and convinced the health professionals that more use of masks was going to help flatten the curve and protect our health system, we have embraced that, we're coordinating that through those three weekly calls I mentioned as well, to be helping make those, one, help make masks available to our employees and ultimately to more residents. You probably know there are more than 200 volunteer mask makers at work in our community, which is fantastic. And we at the city have helped coordinate that. We're using Allison Jukebox as a, kind of as a distribution logistics center to help assemble those and distribute those. We are making those available to our frontline employees. We continue to emphasize that physical distance is a given. Masks are not a replacement for physical distance requirements, but they can be a supplement in a couple different ways. One, it can make you feel more comfortable in certain settings. And two, we do have some work settings. I'll just give an example where we may have a pipe burst and we have to have two or three people in a trench. They're not six feet apart. We are providing masks in those situations. We will continue to do so while continuing to emphasize the first measure is physical distancing wherever possible and happy to go and decide that more. I'll note also for our employees, you know, we have a wonderful group of 700-plus employees who are doing great service in our community. There is a holiday Friday, which will be well received. Of course, not everybody's on a holiday, but many are in our city staff. You know that the election day has been moved from May 5th to June 2nd. That holiday, we may work with you to think about moving that holiday and other things that we're thinking about to help support our employees in these challenging times. I will let you know the Life Assistance Program, formerly known as Employee Assistance Program, is being encouraged to our employees if they have stress or anxiety or mental health inquiries, questions. We're also working with Centerstone and I want to thank them, reaching together to perhaps identify some more particular COVID-19-related services that we might offer. So that's happening. I will also just say, we have a lot of projects going on. You may have seen the releases with the community slower. It's actually, there's significant work, you may have seen, going on in Kirkwood. All these with, usually with contractors, with physical distancing components. But Kirkwood, school crosswalks with the schools closed, there's work going on in school crosswalks, West Allen Street, West Adams Street by the cemetery, Sarah Road Path. These projects with less traffic and with less busyness, it's actually an excellent chance to do that work. Lastly, I'll just close before handing it off to Beverly and Alex. I continue to try to communicate, open up to let people know what's going on, also take questions. I sincerely appreciate the chance to do this each week. As I mentioned, the Friday press conference, I also do a Monday video to the public, starting to do weekly other media things. GCL, WGCL is doing a program every Tuesday. We're talking to the Herald Times. There's Thursday events and I think just continuing to communicate. I know all of you do that through your circles and that's so helpful just to be in touch with our public and reminding them of the importance of what we're doing to protect ourselves and protect our neighbors. And I just, I want to thank everybody for all they're doing. It's a wonderful way this community is shining and standing up, including all of our workers. And if it's okay, I'll hand it off to Beverly and Alex in succession and then open it up to questions.
Okay, do members mind holding their questions for the mayor until the presentations are done? Okay, please continue. Please continue.
Beverly?
Who's going first?
Beverly, are you on?
I don't see Beverly on the meeting. I know Alex has joined us. As soon as Beverly gets on the meeting, I'll.
Okay, we'll go Alex. Alex and then Beverly. If Beverly's not able to make it, I can give quick updates. Thanks.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So thanks very much for the opportunity to give you a quick update. And then, of course, we'll get into more depth on this a bit later on with the ordinance. I'd like to start, I'm going to try to, try to do some screen sharing. So Stephen, I don't know if people can see the screen sharing.
Be one second. Go ahead and try now.
All right, everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to start first by just highlighting the, and the tremendous work that they've been doing in alphabetical order. We have Patty East with the Dimension Mill. We have Jane Cooper Smith with the City of Bloomington. Brian Payne with CFI Friendly Bloomington. Jen Pearl with BPC. Erin Predmore with the Bloomington Chamber. And Sean Starwitz with the City of Bloomington. This has been a group that has worked really, really well together and spending more time with each other than we are with our spouses. So it's been quite an experience to, it's a tribute to everybody how well the team came together. We also have been added, we've added to the group Jeff McKim from the county and really appreciate his input and his participation because that helps us line outside of the city limits. And then also, Councilmember Scambaluri has been an integral part of this as well and we really appreciate her feedback and her guidance as we've developed some of these thoughts. So as you know, version three of the policy document was the latest iteration. We distributed that to you on Monday and we appreciate the feedback that we've gotten from council members. We published a consolidated question and answer document, which you should have received today. So hopefully that helped clear some of the questions, but we happy to talk about that later on as well. Version three really took a much more focused approach on rapid response and set everything else a bit further down in the document or in the appendix so that really allowed us to flesh out some of the details, even though it's still in fluid and in progress, the details having to do with our rapid response programs. So we're basically moving from, you know, planning into implementation mode in real time. And there are a lot of unanswered questions still, but we're working hard to get those nailed down. And as the mayor mentioned, we are in a full-out sprint to try to get implementation done this week, if we can, and get the programs rolled out. So as you know, there are two programs, two categories of programs. One is funding and the other is non-funding technical support. We really appreciate your consideration of the food and beverage tax as part of the funding picture. And we will also be approaching the Bloomington Association tomorrow to see if they would contribute as well. Together, that will create a fairly robust initial funding package that we can implement for some processes we can talk about as we talk in greater depth later on. On the non-funding technical side, there are a number of different programs that are. See if I can remind you of these. Can you see the second slide there?
Yes.
Okay, so the Monroe County COVID-19.org site is the site that consolidates a lot of information from a variety of different sources. It's hosted by the Chamber and we really appreciated them actually putting it up weeks ago. So it's been a constantly evolving resource and we encourage anybody who is looking for information to start there because there's a lot of really good information located there. As the mayor mentioned, 39 Degrees North, which is a Bloomington company, worked feverishly over the weekend to basically create a map of any business that is providing business services in town. You can find that at openforbloomington.com. And when you go to that site, you'll see the map and then you click on any of the locations and it'll tell you who that is, what kind of service they're providing and some of the constraints that they put on themselves based on the COVID crisis. It's a really great program. We appreciate Patty East on our team helping to get that done and really the folks at the mill and 39 Degrees North for having built it so quickly and made it available. It's part of an effort to try to keep some of these essential businesses with new flow during this crisis. And then the third one listed here is AskTheMill.org. This is essentially the navigator function I spoke a little bit about last week. And again, it was built by the folks at the mill and has a whole bunch of volunteers behind it. And it is a way to ask questions about how to navigate some of this external and internal funding and non-funding resource, you know, package. So the, you can either call in, you can email, and I think they're working on texting. That may already be available. But anyway, this is a way for anybody who's got some questions to speak to or email with or otherwise communicate with an individual who can help guide them to resources that are available. And then finally, the, I want to say a couple of words about the online farmer's market. We talked about this last week. It launched last week and there were something like 500 orders or so and about $33,000 worth of orders. So the online platform was stood up in record time using, primarily led by Rachel Byer, who is a member of the Economic Sustainable Development Team, but also.
Mr. Crowley, could I just interrupt to say that you seem to be fading in and out? If you could maybe stay a little closer to your computer, I'm not sure what's happening.
Yeah, is this okay?
Yeah, I mean, it's fine. It's just it comes and goes.
Okay, okay.
Keep going.
Launched last week and we do recognize that there were a lot of challenges on the ground to deliver, to really deliver the food and to the people picking it up. We are making changes for this year's market. Communications going out with those changes in it. And what we're trying to do is essentially adjust to have a much smoother system moving forward. So a tremendous amount of work with a number of different departments from the city involved in that and encourage people to continue to support that. It is a really important resource for farmers and for artisan, you know, food artisans in Bloomington. So I'll pause there and look forward to any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there, I've suddenly, is Ms. Calendar Anderson present? If not, Mr. Mayor, could you report on her behalf?
I will. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes. Thanks, I'll just be very brief. I just want to thank the group of the five philanthropic civic leaders again for their work. They had a very intensive weekend, particularly focused on housing. I'm not going to go into the details, but from Shalom, to Wheeler, to New Hope, to United Way, to the city, to other funders, there was a very intensive work to try to identify housing options as best we can for both for people who simply should be isolating, self-stay-at-home kind of thing when you don't have a home, as well as projecting and planning for those who become, who may become infected or at high risk of that. There was actually a person transferred up to an Indianapolis shelter over the weekend. That group has been working together very well in identifying the best options as a team and as a community, which I sincerely appreciate and is so important. Similar work is going on with childcare for essential workers, an estimate of a little over 200 slots needed for kids from birth to 12. I know there's talk about some certain city facilities helping with that, how to staff those, how to make sure the healthcare workers, the first responders and others are covered as they need to be with family support like that, as well as some housing for them that's also developing for people who may not want to go home between shifts or that kind of thing. And then I know also the food work is going seriously. So that group, and Beverly could give more details, but that group is intensively at work. I fully expect by next week, you will hear substantially more details from both of these task forces working, but I'm really proud and pleased to thank the people who are participating with them. And let me just leave it at that and take questions from you all as you can.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentations from both you and Mr. Crowley. Are there questions from council members for the mayor and city offices update? Please raise your hand on screen so I can see you. No questions. Oh, Councilmember Rosenberg? Councilman Rosenberg, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, sorry, I'm just muting myself. I just wanted to ask about the farmer's market, just if you could go into a little more detail about how you're streamlining the pickup for produce and everything for this week.
Yeah, I'll, obviously the farmer's market's run by the Parks Department and they had, I promise you, a very intensive Monday session yesterday to review everything. That was the first time that was done. You know, we moved the location to try to help take it out of the congested downtown location. It was quite a delay for the drivers and I know that they're going to be digging deep to figure out how to make that more efficient. It was very well, safely run. I have to say, people were incredibly Bloomington-nice and generous to, I didn't, I may have heard, I may have heard one word or two out of hundreds of people, but I appreciated the patience and they're going to be looking at how do they speed up the delivery from inside the pavilion while continuing to do all the social distancing, physical distancing that's needed to protect the staff. I thank everybody for their efforts. It was the first week and the second week will be better. It was great to see how many people wanted to buy farmer's market products and support their local farmers. So I do appreciate that.
I can add a little bit of detail to that if that's helpful.
Please.
One of the, one of the challenges was just the sheer volume. So what's going to happen in this next iteration is we're going to drop, we're artificially dropping the volume to 325 orders, down from 500 plus to create a little bit more room for processing. And that, this number, you know, could increase over time, but we're doing an artificial suppression right now. We're going to have more staff and volunteers outside to manage traffic and improve the speed of delivery to vehicles. We're going to increase the distribution hours, so it'll be now from 8:30 to 3:30 on Saturday. And the alphabet will be broken up slightly differently according to last name. We're going to use the system for labeling vehicles as they arrive to improve the efficiency of order delivery. We're going to be ordering, we're going to have the orders packed in real time when someone shows up. So in other words, rather than trying to pre-pack, which created a lot of chaos and confusion last Saturday, we're going to be doing real-time order packing as someone shows up. So there'll be some, there'll be about a 15-minute wait as that happens, but the process for that to happen. And then finally, we're going to be improving the systems for sanitation, for social distancing and measures to protect the staff, particularly that staff that's inside the building. When you have, when you have chaos ensuing inside, it breaks down social distancing a little bit. Maintaining a system that encourages that.
Thank you. I note that Beverly Calendar Anderson has arrived at the meeting. I note that Beverly Callender Anderson has arrived at the meeting. If she wants to supplement what the mayor said on her behalf, we would like to hear from her. But I also know we have a question from Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Please go ahead, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Well, I just wanted to ask, Mr. Crowley, you said you would be reaching out to request that the Bloomington Something Association also contribute funds and you kind of faded out there, so I didn't catch what association that is.
Urban Enterprise Association.
Oh, okay.
Okay, any other questions? If not, Ms. Callender Anderson, did you have anything to add?
Councilmember Simms.
Oh, Jim Sims. I didn't see, hello, Councilmember Sims.
That's okay. I'll do jumping jack.
Two different screens. They're two different screens.
But you're the IT guy.
I gotta catch you. Go ahead for a second.
I do have a question. This is-
Yeah, no, no, I didn't write this program, my friend.
No problem. This is with regard to the app award we've been asked to approve, supporting the local tourism during COVID emergency. And we're talking about the Food and Beverage Tax Fund, $2 million. But can someone give us an example of how we'll use that, those funds, in conjunctions or as leverage with other funds? And we just had an example. How would we get a bigger bang through collaboration with other funds and other organizations? Is that something that someone can elaborate on a bit?
You want to take that first, Alex, and I'll back clean up? Or you want me to go and you have to clean up after me?
I have a point of order.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith, you're recognized.
I have a point of order. This is, if this is about the legislation, then we should answer this question when we're talking about that legislation. It sounds like it is.
I thought this was, I thought this was questions to the presenters. I'll defer to our parliamentarian. I'll defer. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's probably in order. Any other questions on the reports given by the mayor, Mr. Crowley? I'm having trouble seeing people. Internet is slow tonight and everybody sounds drunk, just so you know.
Isabel's raising her hand.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Mr. Crowley, you mentioned that volunteers are helping with the farmer's market. Is there a need for more volunteers?
Well, we do have a, we do have a kind of maximum people count challenge on that side of things. And so I think for this couple of weeks, it sounds like we're in shape. I have future weeks, we may need to have some additional volunteers and we'll make sure that we communicate that as clearly as possible to the public. We do, we're trying to cap the number of people that are inside and then also running around outside. You know, it's just, you just don't want too many people. So I think, I think the short answer is this week, it sounds like we're okay. The future may be different.
But we always, we always welcome people going to Volunteer Network and offering to help. That's great. And signing them whenever.
I have another question, Mr. President, if I may.
Go, please continue.
So-
Please continue.
I find the housing situation is really urgent. I mean, the longer we have people crowded in Wheeler and Friends Place and our other homeless shelters, the more likely it is that the disease will spread among them. So I really would like to push a little bit and ask, how far away are we from finding or facilitating a larger space for homeless people to spend the night where they can be spread out?
Yeah, let me answer that. Beverly may want to add too. We actually, I think it was Friday afternoon, they all kind of run together a little bit, but developed a plan to, again, the three New Hope, Shalom, which includes Friends Place and Wheeler as the key shelters, to identify the way, basically to move 50 to 70 male overnight folks by expanding the footprint of Wheeler in a couple of different ways at their location, as well as using the Hillside Warehouse location as an expansion. And I think the four, those four entities had identified how to handle that overnight. And as you know, the Hillside Center is open. I don't know if Beverly can add details on that, but I believe it is imminent if it's not already underway. Now, there are, one of the parallel issues is, and this kind of came up in the last few days as we got deep into some of the planning that had been done a little less, in a less integrated way. One of the big parallel issues is, of course, we're not only concerned about nighttime, we're concerned about daytime distancing as well. And we're seeing a lot of non-physical distance behaviors during the day and trying to work with all of the partners to identify ways to not only protect at night, but also during the day, I think is still a work in progress. Some of you see gatherings at Seminary Square, others, Shalom has changed its daytime protocols to restrict numbers. And so that, I think, is still needing some collaboration with our partners. And let me hand it to Beverly if Beverly wants to straighten out anything I said or add details now that you're here, I think.
Yeah, I am here. You just can't see me because I don't have my Zoom face on, but-
Our loss.
It was, it was Sunday, actually, that we came up with the plan. And the mayor is correct. The Hillside space that was going to be used for an isolation shelter had one person in it. That person has been changed, has been transported to the safe isolation space in Indianapolis. They, I think today and tomorrow, may be decontaminating it. And so then that will be used to expand the folks that were at a friend's place, the Wheeler space, they have, they had some other space, so they're going to use space. And then that way, they don't have to hire more staff. We don't, I mean, they can use their same staffing, their same protocols that they're already using. And so we have taken care of the nighttime piece. And then there's a hope for additional sheltering later on for isolation and quarantine.
Very good. Any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Callender Anderson, and welcome.
Well, thank you.
Any further questions for her or Mr. Crowley or the mayor? Please show your hand. Seeing none, it's time for us to move on.
Matt's got his hand up.
Oh, Councilmember Flaherty.
Sure, yeah.
Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. As Chair of the Climate Action Resilience Committee, which was working with the Social Services Working Group, I was on a call last Friday with a lot of these leaders from our shelters in town and there was some discussion about longer-term plans to develop a regional isolation center and efforts going on there with support potentially from the state or federal government. I wanted to ask what role the city will be playing, kind of ongoing, in facilitating that effort as we work to find a better isolation center solution for the medium term?
I can add, I actually spoke to Family and Social Services Administration today, the Department of Mental Health. And addiction is the division within that that is, that does have some financing that looks like it's some weeks before we can get it, though not too many weeks, that will be very important and helpful to, as you mentioned, to possibly provide. They're looking for regional hubs that will provide isolation services for people who don't have other options, who have either been assessed as likely having COVID or actually having it, or they don't need hospitalization, but they need that kind of care. It's very good that that is available, that kind of support from the state. And I spoke directly with FSISA to indicate, I think it's really important that the city be directly involved in that. It looks like it'll be a grant through some governmental entity that would then flow through to some providers. And we look forward to figuring that out in the short, short time ahead. I know our providers, the ones I've already mentioned, are interested in that. And I think it's something we have to look at, what that would mean to be a six-county hub for this, what that would work. The only one now in operation is in Marion County, but it's something that I think could be a very good fit. And I think the team that you're talking to here is deeply involved in trying to figure that out.
Thank you. Any further questions on the reports from the administration?
Rallo.
Councilman Rallo.
Councilmember Rallo, please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Okay. I don't have a question, but I just have a comment. Is that all right?
Yeah.
I want to follow up on the mayor's comments about masks in the community.
Please.
I was, I found a couple of weeks ago, I was very frustrated that the health authorities would not recognize a really, a very well documented best evidence of the efficacy of masks. And I found that very frustrating and it impaired, I think, our response to some degree. However, Mayor Hamilton, upon the reversal of the health authorities last week, complete reversal on the efficacy of masks, established a group to facilitate the volunteer effort that has been occurring. And Mayor Hamilton mentioned 240 volunteers. And that group was recognized as the Bloomington Quilters Guild. That was, and there are other groups, but that one has, I think, the majority of people working on it. It has a number of advantages. For instance, it's a, it is ranking the risk in terms of the distribution of the masks. It's doing quality control of the masks. It's doing laundering of the masks and so forth. And so I think the reason I want to mention this is that it's a very important effort that's going on in the community. And I want to recognize Mayor Hamilton as his efforts in supporting it and his staff, Paula McDevitt, Jason Moore, Beverly Callender, Anderson. I've been key to establishing what Mayor Hamilton described as the centralized location right now, which is the Allison Jukebox. So that's underway. And of course, they've got a priority in terms of distribution of the masks, but the hope is to get them in as many hands as possible, as soon as possible. And I'm very heartened by the effort and it's an amazing community effort that's underway. And I want to thank Kelly Clark, who's been spearheading it at the Bloomington Quilters Guild. That's it. Thank you.
We lost a few words in there, Mr. Rallo, but I think we got the gist of your message. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, so in the prioritization of who gets masks, where are grocery workers and people who work at CVS and other stores that remain open and busy?
Are you asking me?
Whoever can I answer?
Yeah, I, I think they're a very high priority. Clearly, the highest priority has been healthcare workers, retirement homes, elderly homes, homes for the elderly, people who have various impairments, places like Wheeler Mission and Shalom. And I think grocery store workers are obviously on the very, on the front line. And so those will be prioritized. That's my understanding. Maybe Mayor Hamilton has more to add on that.
I would just add, I think it's, what's happened is really important, which is that we have, and Dave has been a leader in this with the other people you mentioned, have consolidated and integrated the assembly and the high-quality production. And that also means that same process and group will help identify the priorities of uses. Because what we found was, a lot of volunteers were producing and somebody would say, can I have them? And they'd say, sure. And then somebody else would say, can I have them? And they'd say, well, they're gone. And it wasn't a prioritized effort. So I'm not going to try to tell you that priority right now, but that group, including the emergency management system and the health professionals, will help identify how to allocate those as needed. And reminder, these are all non-medical masks that are available for all those kinds of uses. But I really appreciate the group that has brought some, assembled this amazing energy and helped focus it into the best services that it gives. So thank you.
Is there a way that people can donate either supplies or money to this effort to make masks? I mean, I donated to the Quilters Guild online, but is, what can we tell people who want to help with it?
I would just say, contact our office, contact the Bloomington Volunteer Network. There's a hundred, you know, there's different ways to do that. You can go through the websites that Alex mentioned and others, but we'll find you. If you have something you want to offer, let it be known and we'll find you. Thanks.
Okay, any further questions or comments on the reports from the mayor and city offices?
Councilmember Smith?
Oh, thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
I just wanted to thank the mayor for bringing, consolidating that information about the Quilters Guild and the Jukebox. Over in, on my side of town, you know, District Three, there's been some pretty active people that I've been connecting with on Nextdoor app and they're making masks and they're trying to figure out how to get them to people. So I'm going to suggest to them that they contact, you're saying, contact the mayor's office?
That'd be fine.
Okay, I will. And thank you very much.
Tell them to keep sewing. That's good. Keep sewing.
Yes, they are. Thanks.
Madam Clerk?
I think Ms. Callender Anderson might have a comment, if you could unmute her.
Ms. Callender Anderson, you are recognized.
She's muted.
Okay, yep, here I am.
Give her a chance. Give her a chance.
So there's been a fund set up through United Way. If people would like to make financial donations to the mask fund, it's the Monroe County Mask Fund. And you can just, any financial donations can go through United Way. If there are donations of materials or they need elastic and materials and things like that, we can arrange to get those things to Kelly. But if it's for monetary donations, just send those to United Way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members who I can't see who want to speak? God knows I'm missing somebody every time. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Thank you, Ms. Callender Anderson, for the reports. We look forward to hearing even better news next week. We go now to reports from council committees. Councilmember Sam Bird?
Thank you. Of course, the Jack Hopkins Social Services Committee is well underway. Last week, I mentioned that we have extended our deadline. It was to have been on the 30th and now it's going to be on April the 13th, Monday at 4:00. This is very important because members of this committee have been discussing, we've already made some changes. We want to expedite to the best of our ability and we want to make sure that the crises and the most urgent needs for low-income individuals that these social service agencies are supporting are going to get top priority. Now, again, April 13th is the deadline for getting the applications in. On May 4th, the committee will review all the applications. A lot of work is going to be done between the deadline and getting the packets to the committee members. For that initial vetting, we'll be asking questions of many of the agencies to help clarify some of their applications. And then the agencies will have until May 14th at 4 o'clock to present answers to any questions that may arise from that first meeting. We have a series of typical meetings that occur, pre-allocation meetings and then the allocation meeting itself. One thing that we have made a decision to eliminate this year is the public hearing because of the complications- this year is the public hearing. Because of the complications of each agency getting on a Zoom platform, some people may be able to do that easily, others may not. We have decided that the committee will be able to vet the applications just by a written application itself, with the addition of those questions that we will, we will seek and get answers to. Now, needless to say, information has already been shared with the agencies that Jack Hopkins has always had in our priority, emergency services. And without a doubt, this community and all communities in the state are in an emergency. And so we wanted to make sure that all the agencies, as they're preparing their applications this week and next, they really write their applications to the most pressing needs that obviously COVID is going to be presenting. Now, then, the committee itself is going to obviously work with a number of the challenges already on the ground. We've already heard from Beverly Callender Anderson and the mayor and Alex about what they're seeing in terms of planning ahead, looking to what the need is going to be on an increased level. All of those will be, I am absolutely certain, knowing all the members of the committee like I do, will be taken into high priority and consideration as we're making the decisions. Now, I don't know if Dan Sherman or Stephen Lucas want to add a little bit to the Jack Hopkins. I don't have my computer up in front of me to maybe answer any questions anybody may have about what went out to the agencies. But one of the things that we always want to make clear to them is we want them to understand the criteria and what the committee will be looking for. It has always been in the Jack Hopkins criteria that we can prioritize emergency needs for housing, healthcare, shelter. Now, obviously, other things may come to the forefront with childcare and, and other things. But the committee will do a very good job and a very thorough job, as it always does, in vetting these applications and making sure that the Jack Hopkins funding gets distributed in the best possible manner, given that we are in an emergency here. Any other further questions?
Are there any questions for Councilwoman Scambalory, Chair of the Jack Hopkins Social Services Funding Committee?
And that would be Sue Scambalory, Chair of the Social.
What did I say? What did I say?
Sue Scambalory.
I'm so sorry, Councilwoman Sandberg. Too many yeses, too many yeses on the council. Councilwoman Sandberg, any questions for her? Sims and Smith, oh my, you know.
This, this committee is, is not going to have an easy time of it, that is for sure. Obviously, we have, we have always done a good job of allocating the money. We have $311,000 to allocate this year. And we will look at the top priorities and the top needs and take it as it comes. But this is primarily a reminder to all the social service agencies out there, we have given you extra time to really be thoughtful and to really prioritize your needs in a way that's going to be compelling to the community and its needs and to the committee, who are going to make these tough decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Any other council committee reports? Seeing none, we'll go to legislation for second reading and resolutions. Madam Parliamentarian?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that appropriation ordinance 2001 by introduced, be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please. Do we need to take roll call votes even on this, too? Come in, Madam Clerk?
I think so.
Okay, may we have a roll call vote on reading by title and synopsis?
Sure. Hang on just a second. Councilmember Rallo? You're muted.
You have to say yes. You have, we have to hear your voice, Mr. Rallo. You have to unmute.
I was muted, sorry. Yes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scambalory?
Yep.
Rosenbarker?
Yep.
Sims?
Yes.
Wolin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation Ordinance 2001 to specially appropriate from the food and beverage tax fund expenditures related to the convention center expansion in support of local tourism during the COVID-19 emergency. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance appropriates funds from the food and beverage tax fund for expenditures to businesses and their employees that together are crucial to the success of the convention center and have been severely affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. Your committee of the whole recommendation was due past 9:00.
Mr. President, I move that appropriation ordinance 2001 be adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Who will present? I'm not sure who is here to present this.
We've got Corporation Counsel, Philip Guthrie.
Thank you. Ms. Guthrie, please proceed.
Yes, thank you. As you all know, this started with a request from the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission that they recommend that you be allowed to spend $2 million from the food and beverage tax fund receipts to support local businesses that have been affected by the COVID virus crisis. They did do that on March 25th. They issued a recommendation by majority vote, and it came back to you last week. This, this week would be voting on this final vote, and we request that you do vote for it. The ordinance is a, an app board that mentions the $2 million and the rationale for it. It was questionable, at least in the beginning, whether or not this was going to be acceptable to the state. And I think, as you also know, that the State Board of Accounts issued a directive saying that this was an appropriate expenditure if the governing body, you, passed a policy, they're calling these things policies, in writing, that says that you believe it's an appropriate expenditure and that your legal counsel has told you that. Well, the Corporation Counsel, not your legal counsel, although it's kind of indirect, says that it is appropriate and that the expenditure of funds from this particular fund for the intended purpose is more tied to the purpose than expenditures from another fund. So in other words, using these funds is better than using the general fund. And there is a whereas in the ordinance saying that. And then the second piece is just mention of how the funds would be managed and expended. And as you know, that that piece really is fleshed out through Alex's work and his policy document and whatever loan documents are developed. So that is the request. I understand there is an amendment, and I think Isabel Piedmont Smith has sponsored that. So I will leave that to you all. I'm happy to answer questions.
Before we move to the amendment, thank you. And before we go to questions, if Mr. Underwood wants to weigh in as well, I don't know if he had planned to make comments. Otherwise, did you have comments, Mr.?
Just want to add to this, and Alex will speak to it as well, that this will follow our normal internal review process as well. So essentially, as these are approved, they'll come in to Alex. He will review them, the recommendations, he will sign off on them, and then myself and Larry Allen from Legal will review those. So the normal separation duties and, and internal controls will remain in place for the use of these funds. And Alex will talk some more about that coming up.
Mr. Crowley?
We've discussed this with the Controller's Office and with legal staff. What's important from a process perspective is for us to really let the experts make determinations about loans and/or to the extent that there are any grant money coming particularly from the BUEA, that those be, those judgments be made by a group of people who can do that as quickly and efficiently using the expertise they already have as possible. So we, it is not our intent for city personnel involved in that process. But as Jeff mentioned, the, the step that follows that, once they've created a recommendation list of, of loans and the terms associated with those, that would then come over to the city and we would be validating that process against policies that we would finalize with that group. And, and then we would review and make sure that everything seemed to be, you know, was in order with what they have made in terms of recommendations. Our process then would take that, turn it over to the Controller's Office and to Legal for their review and approval. And then it's only at that point that we would be signing, you know, final documentation and then issuing any kind of directive to the financial institution that will help us with this so that they can release the funding. So there are multiple touchpoints inside of the city. That's done by design to ensure that there is maximum validation of, of the process. And we are, you know, finalizing those process documents as we speak, so we can have that all set up and ready to go when we release.
Okay, are there initial questions before we go to the amendment? Councilman Rallo?
Well, I think this is for any of the presenters. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I wondered if the, this appropriation has any bearing on future expenditures from the fund? Does the State Board of Accounts review how this money was spent before we could go back to the fund and maybe do a future appropriation in a similar fashion? Or is there, is there anything that you know about that?
I'll jump in. One of the reasons that we went to the State Board of Accounts was to get an opinion from them, whether we could utilize the funds in the way that we were proposing. That spurred them, that along with a number of other requests, actually issue a statewide directive that given if we followed the process that they laid out, which I believe the amendment's going to speak to, is they would not take exception to the use of those funds. Then going forward, obviously, the normal appropriation process would be in place. So on an annual basis or as needed, we would appropriate those funds, come to you all for approval. The Department of Local Government Finance would review and approve it as well. So there shouldn't have any bearing of this program on future uses of those funds. Obviously, to issue bonds for the project, it will be based on the revenues that are available in the cash balance. So it may delay that somewhat because we are utilizing some of the funds and the people that collect and, and remit it are not at full, full staff right now. So, you know, we anticipate that we'll see a drop in those revenues, and those will pick back up as we get through this crisis.
Thanks.
Further questions before we go to amendments? Councilwoman Scambalory?
Thank you. Mr. Crowley, I have kind of a 30,000-foot question. What I think has the potential to be confusing to a lot of people is the role of the CARES Act and the role of Families First and what comes in at different points and what benefits individuals and what benefits organizations. And I think that has the potential to get kind of confusing. The report does a job of putting this kind of in context, but could you speak to that? How this fits into the larger picture of these other pieces of legislation at the federal level?
Yeah, that's a good question. And I think that gets to the crux of really what local funding can do and what it probably shouldn't do. So the, you know, it's unclear exactly how long things are going to take to play themselves out from the CARES Act. And it's unclear whether or not Phase Three is the last. It sounds like there might be a Phase Four on its way. So some of that uncertainty remains and, and it's, it's not, the timing of delivery of some of the benefits is a little bit up in the air. We're trying to keep track of that as much as we can. What, what is clear is that it, some of it will take a while. You know, the systems are getting choked up right now. It's just going to naturally take a while to deliver that benefit. So we are, you know, we are trying to target the immediate needs, so really try to cover some of the gap in timing primarily that will exist in the near term, which is why speed to market is so important for the local program. Because that, that initial period is probably the one that will make or break certain beneficiaries. And so if we can get something to them quickly, that could be the difference. So this is not intended to carry the local economy. There's no way we have the resources to do it. We don't have the ability to take on debt to do that. You know, we just don't have the same kind of resources the federal government would. What we do have the resources to do is to tactically get in and get out as fast as we can to help in the near term. And so we've been very focused on, I mean, we're calling it the Rapid Response Fund, and that's not by accident. We're really focused on getting out there quickly so that we can try to fill that timing gap to the extent that, that we can.
And just to connect all these dots in my head, so between the CARES and the paycheck legislation and so forth, those are the kinds of things that, that can be discussed with someone at the mill. When you mentioned that someone can call in and consult with the mill and get guidance on how to navigate these different levels of legislation, that's the kind of thing a coach can help with there, so you see, right?
Right. It's a really pretty confusing thing. And, and, you know, those of us who are paying attention to it, I mean, I'll speak for myself, I'm paying, I'm trying to read it as much as I can on what's going on, and I'm still confused by it. And, and so, so there's, you know, the Ask the Mill Navigator Program is there to, in a sense, help to either answer questions to the extent that one of the volunteers supporting it can do that, or to direct people to resources where they can answer more efficiently. If you are a small business owner and you're trying to keep, you know, some revenues coming in and you're trying to keep your shop open, you know, you've got a ton of stuff on your plate right now and probably not a lot of time to review the, you know, massive amount of information that's flowing all over the place about some of the CARES Act provisions. And so one of the, you know, one of the purposes of the navigator, you know, function, AskTheMill.org is, is to try to streamline that to the extent that we can. It's, you know, we are not experts, but we are perhaps further ahead than someone asking you the question. And sometimes that's all, that's all that matters.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Rosenbarker?
Okay, hi. The questions are a little more in the weeds, I think. I mean, just reading through this, it says a business is eligible if you have no more than 250 full-time employees. I don't know the rationale behind 250. I guess to me, that is a lot, but that seems like a very big business. But I don't know if that's normal. Could you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah. So, you know, we, we're trying to not reinvent stuff to the extent that we can avoid doing that. And the, the Small Business Administration uses 250 as one of its definitions for small businesses. So it's not that we're expecting that there are going to be a lot of applicants necessarily in that employee range. I mean, look, if you have that number of employees, you probably have a level of sophistication that had put you in a better position than if you're smaller and have on staff the kind of resources that would be brought, brought to bear. So, so I think, you know, we are, we are trying to align with external definitions that we can. This is one of those examples. And then, but, but there, there aren't a lot of companies in Bloomington that have live employees locally.
Yeah. Can I follow up on that?
Yes.
So, and then it says, I think in the beginning, right, that it's for, to the small businesses or nonprofits that are low on capital. So I guess is that sort of how maybe larger small businesses would get weeded out? That like, they might, they most likely are not low on capital if they are larger like that?
Yeah. I mean, I don't want to make a blanket statement that if you have a lot of employees, it's not going to be a pain. But I do think that there's, there's, you know, if you have 250 employees, chances are you're going to have a fairly a fairly robust financial group inside of your organization. And so you just may naturally be further ahead than than smaller struggling companies.
Okay, thanks.
Further questions before we go to amendments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Followed by Councilor Flaherty.
I wanted to ask about small businesses that are not directly food and beverage businesses, but that may be frequented by tourists as well as local people. Can, Mr. Crowley, can you speak to how it will be determined what is a tourism-related business?
Yeah, let me start. Actually, if I could, if Flippa, if you can kind of, would you be able to talk broadly about the, basically the parameters we put inside of the SBOA memo and and then and then we can talk about process?
The parameters in the SBOA memo?
Yeah, when we were basically approaching the State Board of Accounts.
Oh. Yes, what we told them was some of it is is in the council memo. We told them that the food and food and beverage purveyors and businesses obviously are the ones that pass through the tax from their customers. So they they clearly have a tie to this fund. Moreover, we are working on this project with the county to expand the convention center. And that is the primary financing mechanism, the Food and Beverage Tax Fund. And through bonding. In addition, all kinds of businesses that you could call tourism-related are part of the reason that conventions want to come to Bloomington. We have a wonderful shopping area. And lots of it is patronized by tourists, you know, people coming to conventions, people coming to IU. And that those also should be should be eligible to be supported by a fund like this since they are part of the reason people want to come to conventions. So that was the rationale we used. And I gather they agreed.
So so on a process basis, to be honest with you, we're we're going to have to nail that down here. There's a lot of stuff, a lot of plates in the air. But there are a couple of ways that we can go about doing it. We could go to the NAICS code, right, which is a sort of designation, a coding designation of a certain type of entity, and we could conceivably create a definitive list of of organizations by that kind of coding. So that that would be unambiguous. The danger to that is is simply, you know, getting it, getting it right or wrong. And but but that would be one purely objective way of delivering against that. We could also create the opportunity for someone to plead their case, how they might fit in. And that would be a little bit more subjective, but that that might be a way to to either augment a coding structure or displace it. So that is absolutely one of the items that we have to iron out here in the next couple of days because that that will eliminate, frankly, a lot of a lot of confusion and also streamline the process. What we want to make sure is we maximize the number of people applying that should be applying and minimize the number of people applying that shouldn't be applying.
I don't envy you your task.
Councilmember Flaherty, followed by Councilor Rallo.
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on a line of thinking and questions from the previous few meetings we've had, Sustainable Development Committee a week ago, as well as councils meeting last Wednesday, thinking about how to make sure we are protecting and prioritizing workers and employees to the extent possible through a program like this. We've had some good discussions about this as well as through written email communication. And I recognize that there are other resources out there and that $2 million from the Food and Beverage Tax Fund cannot possibly go very far in covering payroll, for instance, in the form of a grant for, you know, the amount of business, small businesses we have in town. But in continuing to think about this, you know, we have, there are provisions or recommended provisions in the report shared by the working group that we should prioritize funding for certain businesses that meet certain characteristics. For instance, businesses that may have the potential to expand employment opportunities. So we're, at least in some instances, recognizing that a type of business that that has this potential or is prioritizing this thing is more worthy of of these loans than others. And I'm wondering if we could do maybe two things related to that in the context of protecting employees. And one is that we require applicants to report on and clarify what their what has happened to their employees and and what they're doing to work to protect them. So how many employees were employed before the pandemic began? How many are employed now? And what percent of their usual wages are they being paid? And then additionally, asking about plans to aid these employees, whether it's through the Paycheck Protection Program or some other measure. And that, for instance, if they are pursuing the Paycheck Protection Program and pursuing rehires of employees and using the SBA loans to pay, you know, for payroll that will get forgiven. If we could make that, if not a requirement, at least a criteria for for high prioritization in allocating funds, it seems like at least one way that we could make sure that the businesses are, that we're prioritizing the businesses that are also doing right by their their workers and and the community. So what are your, what are your thoughts about including something like that in the application process and in our criteria for evaluating who gets loans or grants?
Well, no, I think it's a good idea. So I think I have to go back and look at the draft application that we had appended as a final appendix appendix to the document. Certainly, we are very strongly, or I should, you know, very closely looking at what other actions are taken taking relative to the PPP. I think it's and and, you know, some of the payroll benefits of the CARES Act. And and, you know, that that's an important element to what we're doing. And that the that the application process does, I'm pretty sure, probe on status of employees. We are looking at at a matrix that would be essentially a scoring matrix for loans that has been generated thanks to the chamber via with local lenders and that they're helping us think through that. And that might also be a place where one scores someone according to activities that they take relative to their employee base. So there are a couple of different places that we can do that, but we are absolutely focused on, you know, making sure that these funds are used specifically for things like payroll costs and and employee-related expenses as well as other expenses. And, you know, we just have to iron out some of those details. But I think it's generally a part of the intent of what we're trying to do. And we just have to figure out how to execute it inside of that process.
And I'll jump in a couple of things. Matt, on that, yes, we specifically will be asking them what other aid they've applied for. And I would think that if they did not put down that they had applied for the payroll relief, then that would that would be a red flag that their employment, it's not there because that act allows you to bring people back and reemploy them as well as continuing to employ them. And any actual costs are forgivable. So that's that's a key element for anybody to apply for to help them get through this time period. And then back to Isabel, another point to add is that Alex is going to be asking for $500,000 from the BUEA. So non-food and beverage businesses inside the zone, we certainly anticipate that if the the BUA gives us that approval, that that will be a pot of money where we can direct funds to those non-traditional food and beverage type of companies that might apply for aid.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you.
Followed by Councilmember Smith.
Well, just generally speaking, some businesses are tourist-related. I think they're self-evident. Other ones are not. And so my question involves that ambiguity. And, Mr. Crowley, you spoke to having a matrix to determine eligibility for qualifying for funds. I wondered, is part of that metric, say, a business offering a historical receipts for, say, a period of time where there was a tourist event and then compared to a non-event period where clearly they were benefiting from the tourism? Is that part of the means of determining eligibility?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand your question. I think what you're asking is whether if if during a period of tourism, peak tourism, business revenue increased, does that?
Yeah. So say there was an arts event and a local business, you know, could demonstrate that their revenue doubled in that period. Is that, would that, say, point to them being a tourist-related business since they've? I mean, clearly, the whole economy is affected by something like that. But I'm thinking of certain businesses that rely, you know, obviously rely on tourism events. Is there something tangible in the sense of having, say, you know, presenting receipts to say, here, here's what we made during, you know, Lotus, here's what we made during Forest Street Fair? Is that part of the determination?
It's a good question. I I think it comes down to how we decide to qualify or disqualify on the upfront. And I think if if, you know, I sort of turned to Flippa too, to see if we might get her thoughts. But I my my gut says, first of all, our objective would be to try to cast the net as widely as possible within the parameters that have been set forward by some of the limitations of the funding. And so, you know, the natural tension will be how to how to do that. You know, business benefits because of tourism. I don't know that that necessarily means that they are a tourism-related business. Parking meters probably get used more. And I'm not sure that people would come to Bloomington to take advantage of our parking meters. So I think there is not necessarily a link, but there could be.
And again, that Dave, that that Commissioner, Councilmember Rallo, excuse me. The restriction on on food and beverage, that that travel or the food, beverage and tourism is only on that fund. It's not necessarily on the BUEA funds, which have a wider berth. So again, I think the combination of the funds will allow us to cast a pretty wide net. So they may not qualify for food and beverage funds, but they may qualify for BUEA funds. So that's why we're trying to supplement that because there will be businesses that kind of fall into that fringe area that, you know, we may not be able to make that nexus on on tourism. But because they're in the downtown, they're in the zone, and they are impacted, there are funds available to them.
Just as a follow-up, will this matrix, I mean, will it be manifested as a numerical score? And then there's a cutoff of some kind? Or how does that work out? Or or you, or is it just sort of an intersection of, you know, out of 10 things, you've got six or, you know, how does, how do you envision that?
Well, the way it's designed, and again, I've looked at the first draft and we have to do some delving into it, but the way designed is it is numeric with a cutoff. So it it has, I don't know right now, about 10 to 12 different scoring criteria. And then each one is weighted. And there is a cutoff so that a reviewer should be able to be pretty objective about making a judgment. There is, at this point, only one that acknowledges it is absolutely subjective. And the question is whether or not that should stay in. It's weighted relatively low, so maybe it just stays in. But 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 right now it's trying to be quantitative and it's trying to be objective. And and really try to reflect both the intent and some of the stated policies of the of the, you know, the current document.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith, followed by Councilmember Scambaluri.
Thank you, President Volin. Mr. Crowley, thank you for explaining a lot of these very complex and there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of plates spinning in the air. So thank you very much. And for your answers, it's there, it's really great. And Ms. Guthrie and Mr. Underwood. So I really appreciate that. It really helps. So in this complex environment, do we have an appeals process by which somebody applies and they're, they think they're should be qualified and they're not? What what do they do?
Yeah. So we've, you know, I think that that will need to be in there because there were, there will be not an insignificant number of people who will not make the cut. I don't think that it's reasonable for someone who would not have made the cut to expect a successful appeal resolution within a given funding cycle because it's going to be really at breakneck speed. But one of the things we want to make sure we do is not in the first iteration. And we 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 speak in the document a little bit about about doing tranches of funding. So I can imagine that an appeal would be staged for review for the following tranche. And and yeah, some people unfortunately are not going to like the answer they get, but but, you know, that that's sort of the way it's going to have to work.
Yeah, yeah. And I understand that. And I just wanted to make sure that we had an appeals process in in the ordinance because it seems like that's only a fair thing to do. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Scambaluri?
Thank you. Just to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So the Rapid Recovery Fund is actually currently has two buckets of money within it. One bucket is food and beverage money. The other is possibly the BUEA money. And there may be other buckets at some point, correct?
Yeah, I mean, right now there are no buckets of money, but
Well, let's hope we can make progress on that. So at some point, someone will be administering which, well, let me back up a second. So theoretically, correct me if I'm wrong. A given entity that's applying for support could get resources from multiple buckets, right?
Yeah, it was probably more, yes.
Not in an implicative way, but just if cobbling together multiple sources makes more sense, that's theoretically possible, right?
Yeah, I think it was probably more likely, as Mr. Underwood was saying earlier, is that that someone, you know, because the food and beverage pot, if you will, is so much more substantial than the BUEA one. The probably more likely that 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 if there is a judgment that a particular loan be made, sequentially, the question will be, does it qualify for food and beverage money? And if the answer is yes, and the likelihood of it going through that process is is higher because there's, there's more to more funding potentially available there. If the answer to that is no, but it's still worthy, then I think that's where the BUEA funding comes into play as a way to, you know, expand on 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 what would otherwise be disqualified by virtue of some of the limitations of food and beverage money. So it's more likely that that kind of sequential judgment will be made rather than that, you know, they'll be a little bit dipped out of here and a little bit dipped out of there to combine into a do a single loan.
Okay, got it. And as a follow-up to that, the sequence you laid out, the advisory committee recommends loans and terms, then economic and sustainable development, then legal and the controller's office. Where in that will the options get spelled out?
Well, that's a good question. I was actually thinking that that Well, that's a good question. I was actually thinking that that might be one of the steps that economic and sustainable development recommends to the controller and the controller validates. So in other words, the, that the advisory commission would basically say, hey, these guys are worth funding. And that the, the determination of which pot of money it comes out of might be better addressed at the city than by the advisory commission. And so we could conceivably look at it, make a judgment, which we would recommend to the controller and say, and then we could also at the same time be tracking the depletion of those funds and providing guidance back to the advisory commission saying, hey, you've run out of X or Y.
That's helpful. That makes sense. Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, I'm going to take a crack at this. Mr. Crowley, the, if there's one thing that gives me pause, it's that because of the need for speed here, we're basically being asked to approve an appropriation that will be, whose rules are still being drawn up and which are not being approved by this body. Can you give us some confidence or solace that, you know, we do not have to worry about the rulemaking involved in this distribution of a substantial sum of money on very short notice?
Yeah, I mean, I guess here's how I would, I would answer that, which is I feel like what's going to happen, I think the working group as a whole feels like what's going to happen is we have a pretty good program that has to go through the wringer once to determine where some of the weak spots are and where, where some of the good processes are. So my feeling is that what we will do is learn a lot from the first grouping of applications that we get. And we will, and we will need to probably make adjustments out of that. So the, the, there will be a level of imperfection. We just have to go into it with our eyes open. We are trying to limit the scope of that. So in other words, as I was saying, not, not put the entire amount into the first load of applications so that we can have an improved process as time goes on, recognizing again, speed marks and market is important. So we will, I, I mean, what I, what I think I can say to you and what I can commit to you is one of the things we can do is come back to you and say, hey, this is what worked. This is what didn't work. And this is what we're doing. And so that level of, of reporting back as quickly as possible, I'm within, you know, within a short timeframe, would allow for you to have a better idea of, of process and, and a sense of what process improvements look like. And I'll just, you know, when we come back and report, we'll be frank about things that just didn't, didn't work. So my hope is that rather than just telling you it'll all be fine, perhaps the better thing would be for me to say, we don't know what is going to not break in this first go around, but we'll let you know when we've, when we have learned that. And we will tell you what we're going to do about it.
I appreciate the honesty of that answer.
Again, you know, this is a city program, the, the normal policies and procedures. There's, there are a lot of things that we implement on, from the administration that are not in code. You trust us to do those. You appropriate funds, an annual budget of millions and millions of dollars. And you entrust us to, to spend those wisely and to have processes in place that work. And as Alex said, it, it will be okay. It won't be perfect. And we're trying to be nimble for a group of people that aren't typically nimble at, at all. But I think we've got a good group of volunteers that have expertise to make good recommendations to us. I liken them to a board of commissioners that review and make recommendations. It's up to the administration to tweak policies and procedures to make sure that they work, that we can be nimble, but the appropriate controls are in place. And we're going to continue to have those. So I, I think that we'll be able to make this work. As Alex said, report back to you on, hey, this is what we had to change. We didn't anticipate this. We had more of these kind of applications and less of these. And this didn't work, this worked, and, and we're going to, we're going to fix it on the fly. So, but, you know, we'll be seeing you on a regular basis anyway over the next several weeks and can report back out on that.
I mean, the only difference is that we're making these, the, this policy being made at a much, much, much more rapid pace. And that most of the rest of the money that's distributed through the budget has been done through processes that have been fine-tuned over many years. And, you know, like all the departments are defined in, in code. So there's this, you know, there, there is some infrastructure for how that money gets spent. That's not really here, but that's not to say that I'm not supportive of it. I'm just saying that this is by necessity very hasty, which leads me to my other question. Do you, does anyone from the administration foresee coming back for more food and beverage funds beyond the first 2 million?
I'll, I'll jump in. I don't necessarily know that it would be food and beverage. I think we'll know once we kind of get through this first wave of applications. If we see that the demand is way more than what we've got, you know, way more than $2.5 million, obviously, we would have to assess that. And I think at that point, we would look at additional funding, you know, from food and beverage and other sources. And as well as going out to the public and talking to our friends out in the financial institutions to say, hey, look, you know, this is about the most that we can do. The demand's $4 million. Can you guys, as a group, cobble together another $1.5 million in, in private funding through the banks that we could get allocated out? So that's the nice thing is, is that we're, we're in touch with those people. Again, this is a, a gap, a bridge. We don't know what the demand's going to be. But I think, you know, we're willing to take a look at that once we get an idea of what that demand's going to be.
Thank you. I think that everyone's had a first round set of questions. Councilman Pibon Smith, do you have one more question?
Actually, Councilmember Sims had.
Councilmember Sims, did you have a question that might, did you raise your hand? I didn't see.
Jim. I think everybody saw it but you, but yes, I did, Mr. President. Thank you. I, I understand technical difficulty.
Yes, sir.
I'll start off first with a comment. This is unprecedented times and an unprecedented situation. Things are going to have to move very quickly. So I am appreciative or I feel more comfortable in talking with the mayor and talk with Mr. Crowley and other folks that there is a plan to keep the council informed on, on some of the expenditures, some of their plans on multiple different platforms and multiple different ways. And in some cases, maybe directly to council members. So that's what I, I think is important and I appreciate that. We may not consent policies and procedures totally in advance, but we will be kept abreast in a very timely manner on, on how we proceed. So I just really wanted to say that. But I do have questions. With regard to the first tranche and the second tranche, and I don't know who this will be directed to, probably Mr. Crowley. I was a little bit distressed to hear about the lack of an appeals process. But hearing your explanation, it makes more sense to me. But at the very minimum, do we have a plan? If a, a business doesn't get through or approved in the first tranche, I know there may not be an appeals process, but will they be informed as to why they were not approved in the first tranche? And if that's the case, will they automatically be held in higher priority on the second tranche? If they were left, is that a possibility?
So.
I hope I didn't ramble. I don't know if that made sense, but.
No, I, I think so. I think there, there are a couple of reasons why they wouldn't make a cut. And I think depending on the reason, that will determine the answer to your question. So either they didn't make the cut because their business model was not going to be sustainable regardless. Right? In which case, that would be throwing good money after bad. That would, that would not qualify them for a different treatment the next time we look. So, so there's going to have to be a sort of, you know, business either was going to make it or not judgment. And that's, that's why some, looking at some of the financial records makes sense. The lenders are going to be able to do that pretty, pretty easily. So I, I would, if that were the disqualifying judgment, then, then, then the short answer would be no, no prioritization in the next round. In the event that they were, didn't make the cut because we essentially artificially stopped the funding in the first tranche, right? And, and so they would have had there been funding, they just were lower in the prioritization. Then that, that's a completely different treatment. So I would imagine that that group would be put back in again. And I haven't really, we haven't as a group thought through, what does that mean in terms of prioritization in the next round? But certainly they would not have to reapply. Let's start with that. And then, and then the question is, were they deprioritized because of some quality that may have them deprioritized generally? Or were they deprioritized and in the next tranche, they, they would, they would be treated with more prioritization? It's kind of hard to tell. You know, we'll have to kind of figure that out.
No, that, that makes sense. I was thinking more of the, or the latter, where they might have some eligibility, but we simply ran out of funds in the first tranche. And then how would they be treated in the second tranche? That answered that particular question. I do have another one. It's to do with possible use of BUEA funds. Should they be approved? And I'm specifically looking at the microloan program of $350,000. And then the independent scholarships for $25,000. Obviously, some of the parameters with enterprise zones is that, or BUEAs, is that they must be within that zone. So I guess I'm wondering, how do we determine, or is this just an estimation of $350,000? Or is that just a, a starting figure to get us started and it may be more needed later, maybe? It's much, or maybe we won't utilize all that this go around. And then explain to us about the scholarships and how that would work within this process.
Okay, so let me break that down. So the first thing about an enterprise, you know, about funding for the BUEA.
Yes.
Typically speaking, that does, you know, put, that does focus funding within a very specific geographical area.
And one of them are downtown, correct?
Yeah, it's the one that's downtown. Yeah, it's basically.
Okay, thank you.
So, so, but, but I think that there's, there's also some language that allows for something that benefits the zone. Okay, so, so it, that might be some, some, that might provide some ability to extend beyond the hardback. So that, let me, so that's the first answer. In terms of dollar amounts and, and how they were selected, you, you know, it's not an unlimited funding source. It's a significantly funding source. So, so we, we put together what we thought was a reasonable, in anticipation that the food and beverage tax might cover the majority of the demand, but that we wanted to have the safety valve that, that would, that would cover the, the, the organizations that wouldn't fall under food and beverage. So, but it's hard to tell if that's enough right now, but, but we thought that that would be a good starting point. And then finally, the resident scholarship. This is a program that actually already exists with the Bloomington Urban Enterprise Association. So if you, if you are a zone resident or a zone business, you can have training and education reimbursed up to a certain level.
Yes.
That's an existing program. What we are advocating for here in anticipation of possible demand beyond what we've seen historically, is some allocation of money to, to that particular existing program that the BUEA already manages. And, and, and drawing some attention, who may want to take advantage of it now in a way they might not otherwise have done under regular circumstances. So the only nuance there that I think it may be worth mentioning is that currently it's a reimbursement program. And one of the things we want to discuss with the Bloomington Urban Enterprise Association Board tomorrow is the possibility of temporarily making it a upfront outlay. And, and then a sort of backend certification that it was used appropriately, rather than what's happening today, which is you have to enroll on something and be out of pocket on the cost. And then we, and the BUEA then, then reimburses the applicant through the bursar's office of, of the, of the particular institution or through the training program.
Okay, thank you. That's one reason why I was a little confused because that sounded like an existing program that we already have from them. So it's really in essence the same thing, or, or will be administered the same way.
With that possible change I mentioned at the end.
That possible, yes. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, now we've been through one round minimum of questions. Councilman Pibon Smith, can this wait till we, are you, are you proposing the amendment?
You want me to?
Go ahead. Well, I mean, it's your amendment, right? Go ahead with your question.
Okay. I, I have a few, but the, in the BUEA proposed budget in the report that we read, there's a portion of money set aside for administration, $12,500. Is, would any of the food and beverage tax money be used for administration expenses?
Well, potentially, but I think, you know, I think we, we, it depends on what the status of the BUEA funding ends up being. We're, you know, a lot of the work that's being done is being done by volunteers. A lot of the, the vetting that's being proposed by the, by the experts in the field would, would be unpaid. One of the, you know, the, so it's, it's, we're trying to figure out what the hard costs could be. But, but, you know, one certainly appears to be a, a cost associating with, associated with a, a platform that we want to use to process applications. And it's a platform that already is used widely and, and it's, it would be a, a kind of incremental license to an existing use of that platform by the community foundation. So, you know, there, there are little, there are costs like that, but we wanted to put these aside because they, you know, it's, it's a little hard to tell. Again, as we learn more about what we're doing, what kind of hard costs are going to come out? And so if, if the BUEA funding comes through as requested, that could end up covering us. If those costs exceed, then we may have to look at, at other funding sources. And, and I'd have to talk to Jeff about whether or not the food and beverage is appropriate or whether we'd have to go to operating funds or something else.
And I'll jump in. Our intent would be not to use food and beverage if absolutely can find funds other places to administer it. We have no plan right now to charge for a, a city administrative cost. It would be for only direct costs. And again, we would try to find those out of current operating costs or appropriate other funds. So that, the whole idea is to try as much as possible to recover all of food and beverage back into that because of the stated original purpose. And any funds that don't go back in, that just delays that project a little bit longer.
And then my other question, a few more, but I'll just ask one of them. The, some communities have given no interest loans. And these, of course, are proposed to be low-interest loans. And I understand why that's being done, but just for the benefit of the public, maybe, Mr. Underwood, you could explain why we're not going the route of no-interest loans?
That's a possibility that we can do that, but we wanted to have the ability to charge a small amount of interest, especially if there are some administrative costs. And the fact that we will lose earnings on those funds while they're being deployed. So the idea is to try and get, make the food and beverage fund whole as much as we can, but still issue low interest. The feds, I think, realize the same thing. They initially were doing half of 1% and that got bumped up to 1% as well because they realized there's hard costs to administer those programs. They do need to recover some of that back.
And then I thought I also read in the report that, that was another reason for this. And that is your hope that you will get private investors to participate. Is that, did I understand that correctly? investors to participate. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Only if we, the demand exceeds the funding request. Obviously, if we can, anything that we can do to multiply these funds that are out there, we'd like to do, especially if it's not using city, city funds. So if that, if we are able to do that, so let's say again, the demand's four million and we're able to raise a million and a half in private funds, they're going to expect some return on their investment. So that allows us to, to have low interest rate, rates, loans as well.
And to be clear about that last point, I think the city would be comfortable, you know, not, not actually, in other words, not, the city would be comfortable foregoing its interest to a potential outside source, if necessary, to make it more appealing to draw in external capital. So the city is not trying to make money here. What we're trying to do, as, as Mr. Wood said, is we're trying to, there's going to be some, some loss. And so we're trying to mitigate some of that. And trying to make these processes as appealing to outside capitals as possible. And, and one way to do that would be to have this interest.
Thank you.
Okay. Why don't we go to the amendment?
Mr. President, I move amendment one to appropriation ordinance 2001.
Thank you.
And this amendment.
Motion in a second, please proceed.
This amendment was requested by the administration. And it adds a whereas clause that makes it very clear that we are complying with the State Board of Accounts memo on the use of such funds. So it would add the following paragraph. Whereas the memo from the city's Corporation Council, which accompanies this legislation advises that this expenditure is both appropriate and necessary. And the council explicitly determines that expenditure from this dedicated fund source bears a closer connection to the purposes set forth in this ordinance than to the city's general fund. So that's, I mean, basically reflecting exactly the language in the SBOA memo.
All right. Are there any questions for the amendment from members? I don't see any hands.
Is it proper to call a question?
No, we got to go to the public.
Thank you.
Mr. Lucas, this is the time where we ask for members of the public who wish to speak on the issue to speak up in the chat. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And I know we've got one taker for public comment, but I'm guessing that's on the appropriation ordinance.
Right.
As a whole.
We're looking for, right.
Yeah. Any, any folks that want to comment on the amendment that was just read can do so by either using the raise hand function of Zoom or by sending a message over the group chat.
All right. If there's anyone who wants to comment on the amendment to appro, this appropriation ordinance, not of the ordinance itself, here's an opportunity to speak publicly to the council. Does anybody want to speak from the public to this amendment? Give it about 15 seconds. Please let Mr. Lucas know either by raising your hand, using the raise hand function in Zoom or speaking up in the chat.
No takers.
Seeing no takers, we come back to the council for.
There's a thumbs up from Tracy Gates.
Tracy Gates.
The thumbs up is not a raise hand. If she just saying, that's okay, or if she actually wants to speak?
You cannot unmute yourself. Okay.
Tracy, you're unmuted if you wanted to speak.
Yeah, I have a, a couple of things. A question about the, the timeframe for.
Okay. Let me stop you there. We're just talking about the amendment.
Right.
We're going to have a chance to talk about the ordinance as a whole in just a second.
Okay.
The amendment just adds a whereas clause.
Okay.
All right. Hang tight. Let's go back to council for debate on the amendment. Any final comments on the amendment?
Call the question.
Second.
Motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll on amendment one?
Councilmember Scambalory?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear that.
Yes.
Thank you. Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Mullen?
Yes.
Ian Mount Smith?
Yes.
Larity?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Anne Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
That amendment passes nine zero. We now come back to the council for further questions or debate. Are there any further questions? Councilor Rallo.
Yes. Well, this is a question that's a perennial question, maybe for Mr. Underwood. And that is, is there any risk of jeopardizing federal funds by taking this action from our vantage point at now?
I don't believe so. This is really intended to be a gap measure to really bridge people from federal aid, federal and state aid that may take them some time to get the actual funds in place. So the idea is to provide some funds that will be repaid. So essentially it's a loan program rather than grant program. So I don't believe there's any risk associated with that.
Do you think there's any chance of reimbursement?
Uh, if, because it's a loan program, it, it could well be that it's possible if we have any losses from it. But I wouldn't anticipate that right now since it's really intended to be a gap program, bridge program.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other second round questions, we have to go to the public. Councilor P. Von Smith, do you have questions?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
I have one question. Are the funding recipients going to be made public, who they are and how much they got?
I believe that would be public record because the, the, these are funds that will be distributed from the city to those people. So I believe it would fall under the Public Records Act.
Yes. Yes.
So if people want to know, they can easily find out.
Okay.
Not to say that they would find out details about their, there, there may be confidential things in, in what they talk about with the committee. I'm not sure, but who, who the recipients are would certainly be public record.
And the amounts?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go to members of the public. I know there's at least one who wants to comment on the appropriation ordinance as amended. If there's any member of the public who would like to speak to appropriation ordinance 2001, please use the raise your hand function or type in the chat and Mr. Lucas will call on you.
And I'm going to try to go in the rough order that folks have spoken up. So I think first up, we've got Randy Paul. If he's ready to, to make a comment.
Maybe.
Can you hear me?
Paul, do, yes, now we can hear you. Please go ahead.
All right. Thanks. I just want to speak a minute, just maybe hit a pause button and just bring up a couple of issues that I'm concerned about. I do think sometimes there are moments in a crisis where we were given an opportunity to reflect back on previous decisions and see if they still are valid in our current environment. We're all going to get through this, but what kind of community will we be like once that's done? I think this is one of those times, and I think the expansion of the convention center should lead the review. Our federal government knew for years that we could be hit by a pandemic and did little to prepare for it. We now have a chance to prepare for our next crisis, one we have known about for decades, and that being climate change. We can have a discussion on how the expansion of the convention center fits in preparing us for the impact of climate change. Does it still make sense to expand the convention center, which is hardly an environmentally friendly project, when those same tax dollars could be used to expand other areas like Bloomington Transit? We are running out of time to deal with climate change and why, which is why I think we should repeal the food and beverage tax now, scrap the expansion plans for the convention center, and distribute the full $7 million, not just 2 million, in the food and beverage tax fund to businesses and employees who are suffering during this pan, pandemic. I know it's hard to talk about the next crisis while we're in the current one and while we're all overwhelmed, but time is not on our side. Let's learn from the, let's try to learn from the most important lesson in this crisis, that early preparation is key to surviving our next known crisis, which will likely be the impact from climate crisis. I fully understand the economic arguments for expanding the convention center. I was in business my entire life. I get the arguments. They're compelling. And for the most part, I agree with them. What I no longer agree with is our refusal to change our priorities, that we still worship business and progress over the health and welfare of our children and grandchildren. Our children and grandchildren won't survive if we continue to build parking garages instead of expanding our mass transit system like Bloomington Transit. We have to change our priorities and what better time than now? I have seen the impact that that, we have seen the impact that the pandemic has had on our lives. The impact of climate change will be much worse. It's headed our way and it will be permanent. I really do urge that the council reconsider expanding the convention center. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Are there further members of the public who'd like to speak?
Yes. Next up, we've got Erin Predmore.
Ms. Predmore, please go ahead.
Evening, councilmembers. Thank you for taking your time this evening to hear about this appropriation. I just wanted to, to take a few minutes to let you know about my day today. I spent a lot of time working on this project, working on the application and talking to our lenders in the community to learn from them. But I'm not a lender. I've learned a great deal in the last couple of weeks about what all goes into their decision-making when it comes to loans and, and making sure that we had wise counsel when we came up with the policies and procedures and trying to navigate some of the, the issues that Alex touched on earlier. He's right. We're not quite sure how this is going to play out. I appreciate the honesty that he demonstrated in his, in his comments that we're going to need to make adjustments and changes as we move through this process. And then as somebody on that committee, I wanted to just speak to that with all of you for a moment and just let you know that we're all looking at this and recognizing we're taking our best shot at this. And the reason is because of the rest of my day. Calls today to, to chamber members. We're making an effort to reach out to all of them the last week or two. And our businesses are fading. Some already have faded. They're closing their doors. They're shuttering their businesses. And the Bloomington that we love is not going to be here if we don't act quickly. And so I know there's nervousness around the trust that's required in this moment in our community. And I just wanted to, to jump in and let you know that we're working really hard. We're being honest with ourselves and what we're trying to face. We are going to make mistakes, but, but we'll do them honestly with you and let you know as we navigate this forward. But our community really does need this infusion of cash just to keep things moving so that the Bloomington we love will still be here tomorrow. So thank you for opportunity to talk tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas?
No, Tracy Gates was, wanted to comment as well, but I think she dropped off the, the call. And I don't see any other takers.
All right. Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
Sorry. Give me one more second. We've got Jennifer Pearl.
Pearl, please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Pearl and I'm with Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. And I'm also on the E S and R committee. Just wanted to thank everyone for the careful consideration of everything this evening. The questions honestly that we're getting are really helping us as we move through this process, both in how we shape it and how we communicate about it. And being able to work with such a wonderful group of collaborators is just, it's been incredible. We're just at the beginning of all of this. This is round one of many other plans for recovery moving forward. And we just appreciate your partnership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, any other members who in the public would like to speak?
Yes, we've got David, David D. Go ahead.
David Booker with the Atlas.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Please go ahead, Mr. Booker.
David Booker here at the Atlas in Bloomington. Thank you all for considering releasing these funds that we've been paying into for a couple of years now. I think I missed if those of us that are paying into this to prioritize over other small businesses. I came to the meeting a few minutes late, but Mr. Underwood mentioned something about businesses who don't apply for the PPP loans, not qualifying for these loans we're discussing. And I just think it's important to recognize that there are barriers to the PPP loans that some small businesses might face. There's a lot of businesses in downtown Bloomington who's, the majority of their employees are part-time workers. And since President Trump has signed into the CARE Act and unemployment has been raised, that they, it could be argued that they are better off receiving unemployment. Not to mention that only 25% of those loans can be used for fixed costs. And I, I don't know. I just think that should be reconsidered on that being a stipulation for applying for these loans. So with that, I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Are there further members of the public who'd like to speak to ord, appropriation ordinance 2001? If so, please type into the chat or use the raise hand function and Mr. Lucas can recognize you. Mr. Lucas?
I believe Mr. Vox Booker wants to make a comment.
Mr. Booker, if you would proceed.
Hello, council. I thank you for your time today. I just wanted to encourage you all to, once again, make sure that you, you actively involved in this process. I saw Councilmember Smith had submitted a question, what was the vision of the council's role in appointment and appraisal of advisory commission members? I think it's really prudent that the council have some role in that. The administration has its place and is there to protect the public interest, but the, the council, as you know, is, is an equal part of that. So I just really want to ensure that the vision that the public is expressing and the vision that you all have is mirrored in the final product. I've heard folks like Councilmember Larity, each in employees, I, I've heard, you know, talk about minorities. But I haven't heard some of those, some of those same sentiments from the administration. I would love for them to, to guarantee that they will have some type of minority representation on the advisory commission. And that even though this is a crunch, if we're going to do this, we still need to do it well. And make sure that we're taking care of the most marginalized folks in our community, which are still employees. And once again, I thank you all for your time and effort and your leadership.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Booker. Are there further members of the public who would like to speak to ordinance, appropriation ordinance 2001? Please use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the chat. Mr. Lucas?
Don't see anybody jumping up and down right now. And Ms. Tracy Gates hasn't rejoined us, so.
I'm sorry to hear that. All right. 15 more seconds. We'll wait. Again, if you are a member of the public who would like to speak to appropriation ordinance 2001 as amended, please use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the chat box and Mr. Lucas will acknowledge you.
We do have a taker. Ms. Susan Bright.
Ms. Bright, please go ahead.
Okay. Hey, hey, guys. Thanks for all your hard work. It's been a lot going on this past week. And I've been busy doing diligence and contacting every partner we do business with. From our utility companies to our council, bankers, our landlords, our local plumbers, our electricians, cleaning companies and so on. I'm trying to get them to suspend service, trying to have them forgive monthly premiums for two months. Trying to get some of them to do capital repairs and then get paid after we get loans. Trying to work it through. And today, I'm in. Trying to work it through. And, um, today I'm in a, in a hurdle and I don't know how to get over it. I was told by our accountant that our 16,000 state sales taxes due on the 20th, which it's due every month and we pay it every month. And our fab tax money is due as well, and that's another $1,000. Um, and I just spent that money on payroll last Friday. So I'm doing what I'm told to do is try to keep, um, employees hired and working for us. And that's what the PPP is gonna do for us. The more payroll we can keep going, the more loans will be forgiven. But now we just screwed up the state and the city and I can't pay them. And I don't even need, know who to call to tell them I can't pay that tax next week. So if you guys can let me know, I'd appreciate it and keep trying to help us out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bright. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak to app board 2001 as amended? Mr. Lucas?
I don't see anyone.
Last call, please raise, use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the chat if you are a member of the public who would like to speak to app board 2001 as amended. All right, seeing that, we're going to go back to the council for debate. Is there any last minute questions or final comments on app board 2001 as amended? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you.
Mr. Flaherty?
Yeah, I've been, I've been muted when I stepped away for a moment and I can't unmute, uh, without Stephen's help. Uh, thank you. Uh, I actually had a question, uh, which I, I hadn't, hadn't asked, uh, in our prior question period. Um, but I think in light of Mr. Booker's comments, I do want to explore the idea. President Volan, you had submitted a written question as well, uh, asking about the rapid response fund advisory commission and, and when it would meet and, and, um, if a council member could be a member of that. And Mr. Crowley's response was, um, essentially that that's actually going to be a group of, of experts with, um, relevant expertise to help advise the city. Um, in his response, he just said the city's role would be to review the recommendations. Um, but of course, the city council is also a part of the city and I think, um, I, I, uh, value and, and respect Mr. Crowley's previous answer about the role of council and that, that, um, the city administration will be coming back to report to council on a regular basis throughout this process. But because there is so much uncertainty and so much still evolving, and I think, uh, as Mr. Booker noted, maybe, um, in at least a few instances, a slight difference, um, in priorities or orientation towards certain issues. Um, and because council members, um, have a more direct link often with, um, members of the public and constituents, uh, that having a council member as a part of the city team that reviews the RRF advisory commission's recommendations, uh, wouldn't be a bad idea, um, and indeed would help the council to stay more informed and abreast of the situation than, than simply reporting back would allow. Uh, so that was an idea I was interested in, in pursuing and, um, I guess I would like to hear, um, Mr. Crowley or someone else from the administration's response to that idea.
Mr. Crowley?
I guess I would say this, which is normal circumstances would be different. And, uh, speed is everything here. Uh, we want to obviously be, have controls in place to the extent we can. Um, I, I, I think that, I think it's, it's wholly appropriate and in fact, requested and, and I think universally, um, a shared goal that, that the council lay out broad parameters and goals for, um, their objectives. I would really, really caution council becoming involved in, uh, the weeds. I don't, uh, that will lend itself to fluidity that's necessary in this moment. I think there's an accountability that, uh, you're looking for, uh, that can be delivered as part of the, a, a reporting function. Um, you know, I, I really would, would caution council to become too involved in individual spending decisions, um, which would, you know, which is a little bit extraordinary, um, relative to the regular course of business. I mean, I, we don't check whether or not it's okay to pay, um, a bill, a hootsuite bill that we have in our department. There's a reason for that. I mean, the broad parameters of the funding, um, is given. And then we adhere to that and we report back instant. So, I mean, my, my, my reaction is, um, you know, if, if there were more time, we could figure out, you know, how to lay all of this thing out in a much more deliberate way. But, um, but given the circumstances, I would strongly advise council to lay out what those goals are that you want us to, to follow. Hold us accountable to those goals, but let us do that job, um, you know, and the step by step in the way that, that most effectively delivers against those goals.
Thank you.
Uh, I'd like to respond to that as well. Um, I thought about this and, um, yeah, I do see, um, problems, uh, not big ones, but, uh, minor problems with actual, having actual council members on the RRF advisory committee. I, commission rather. I think it, it that, um, instead of a council being directly involved in the decision-making of each case, that it's better for council to review cases in batches and that rather than one member doing it, that several members do it. I mean, we do have a committee devoted to this topic, the Sustainable Development Committee. Councilmembers, uh, Sandberg, Flaherty, myself, and chaired by Councilmember Scamblerie. That, that I think that's the appropriate place to review the progress of the advisory commission. But not, uh, case by case, rather, uh, week by week or month by month. Let's just see how it goes. I mean, I am very sensitive, as I think people know, to, uh, the distinction between administration and council. I'm something of a jealous defender of council, but here I agree with Mr. Crowley that, uh, the expenses at the moment require, uh, people who are specialists in, uh, this, um, this needed function. And so I am content to delegate that authority to this group, knowing, I mean, th- this is why I asked specifically about the rules that that group are going to use. Because that's how this committee will evaluate the performance of the advisory commission over time. And my only qualm right now is not that this group won't have any members on it. It's that we don't have final rules yet for how they must make funding decisions. And yet we're being asked to approve the funds. So it's an extraordinary amount of trust we're putting into the administration and into the RRF advisory committee, uh, commission here. But, uh, you know, I think that the, um, the, the main, uh, rules for decision-making have been, uh, put out. The, uh, uh, answers to the council questions submitted, uh, by members over the past 24 hours and answered by Mr. Crowley and his department, uh, are generally satisfactory. I think there is some fine tuning that, you know, the, uh, E S D really needs to send to us, uh, by the end of the week, you know, to get the, the rules done, uh, before the RF advisory committee commission. I keep screwing up. The advisory commission actually starts doling out money. We need to know what the, the rules are that they're going to be expected to follow. So, uh, we're not going to ask to approve them like it was an ordinance. But, you know, uh, commensurate with the trust we're putting in the administration. We trust that they're going to send us, uh, the final rules that we can then use to evaluate the performance. That's, that's my thought. Um, are there further, is there further debate on, uh, app board 2001 as amended? I see Councilmember Scamblerie, I see Councilperson Piedmont Smith, Councilmember Scamblerie.
That was kind of a romper room moment just now, you realize.
Romper, bopper, stopper, boo.
Yes. And way too many people are too young to get that reference. Um, thank you for the opportunity to share some thoughts. Accountability, anybody who's known me any length of time knows accountability is really, really, really important to me. And it's so much so, in fact, that was the first question I asked, um, before, what do you see as the need or anything like that during first reading? One of the things I asked was, I'd like to, you know, what can you tell me about the process for how this will be administered? So I, I take that very, very seriously. Um, and I really appreciate the rigor that has gone into crafting this plan and to asking questions that would not, not necessarily have occurred to me. It wouldn't have occurred to me. Um, I'm not convinced that a council member sitting on the advisory committee would ultimately add value to their decisions. If the only goal is to actually monitor and keep in touch with and, and encourage the responsibilities of these funds, I think there are better ways to do it, than a council member actually sitting on that mission. And so I like the idea, Councilmember Volan, you brought up the idea of, uh, having the sustainable develop, or the, um, economic recovery, uh, report back to us periodically. And I think that makes a lot of sense. I think to Alex's, to Mr. Crowley's point, we're going to know a lot after this first round that we don't know now. Um, and I think maybe inviting this group back in two weeks to share an update either with the whole council or with the Sustainable Development Committee makes sense as the next step. Um, and the committee's happy to report back or have them address the whole council if that makes more sense. Um, but I would offer that thought. The other thing that occurred to me as I was listening to the conversation is the notion of trusting the administration to make these, uh, make these decisions. And one of the things that, that occurs to me very clearly is this actually isn't just about trusting the administration. If Alex had done this all by himself in all his spare time, it would be about trusting the administration. But we also have the head of the chamber and the head of Bloomington Economic Development Corporation and the head of Dimension Mill, Inc., and a lot of other people who have put their time and talents, uh, in this process. And so for that reason, that's a lot of collective wisdom and a lot of people who are really invested in seeing this town succeed. And that I am inclined to trust. So I offer that thought. And, okay, one more thing as a fundraiser, I love the idea, um, that we're thinking in terms of leveraging other funds and creating opportunities perhaps at some point for private support to be added to this mix. So thank you for that. Thank you to the committee for what you've done. I'll be supporting this this evening.
Councilperson Piedmont Smith, followed by Councilperson Rallo.
Yes, I wanted to follow up on Dave DeBrocker's, um, points about the, uh, the payroll protection or paycheck protection, uh, program. I didn't realize that there may be hurdles, uh, that employers, um, would have difficulty, uh, jumping through, jumping over, um, in order to access, uh, that program. Um, and I just want to hear from either Mr. Crowley, uh, or Mr. Underwood that those will be taken into account when looking at, um, uh, whether, uh, a business that's applying for funds has tried to take care of their employees.
There we go. Well, uh, yeah, I want, I wanted to clarify, I wanted to clarify, my remark is that would only be you, if they don't apply for that, it would be a red flag for the committee. Certainly any business that doesn't apply for that should list the reasons why. Why aren't you going after available aid? And if there are hurdles or reasons that you can't self-employed people, it's a, it's, it's a bigger jump for them when they don't have any employees to apply for that. They, they're still eligible, but it'd be kind of like this fund. There's prioritization. So it'll typically go to those businesses with employees first or that are going to reemploy. So, um, businesses will have the opportunity to explain why, uh, they couldn't or didn't apply for other aids that are available. And the committee will take that into account.
Thank you.
Uh, just a follow-up question, Mr. Underwood. Are you saying that if, as Mr. DeRucker pointed out, if they do the paycheck protection program, they actually, you know, uh, get punished for it? And it's, or that, or that it's better for the employees to take unemployment because they can't get paid as much as they would on unemployment? Would you take that into account as well?
Absolutely. That's what I'm saying. They should put down their reasoning for either they didn't qualify or they didn't apply, uh, and there may be multiple reasons why. They should list that to give the committee as much information as possible. And I'm sure the committee will follow up. If somebody doesn't put down that they've applied for aid, they're certainly going to probably reach out and go, hey, wait a minute, do you know that? Because again, this is a bridge funding, not, not permanent.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Rallo?
I really didn't have anything except to say, maybe I'll say that, um, I'm willing to let the administration administrate this as long as it's a public and transparent process and, uh, the metric is known and it's applied fairly. I'm supportive.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. Uh, in the interest of being nimble and this absolute need for rapid response, I'm going to make this brief. I vote yes on this and completely support it. Uh, and, uh, I did appreciate the honesty of the committee as they were talking about, we're gonna, we're gonna learn as we go in how to respond to all the critical needs. So this team needs our support. They need our thanks. And, uh, that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Further comments from council members? I'm looking for hands. Uh, Councilperson Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
You're not, listen, you're all, you're not all on one screen. I just, I can't see, I have to go back and forth. Go ahead, Councilperson Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, I, um, wanted to also thank the members of the committee that came up with the, the report, for the rapid response and, uh, B U A funding, um, and the, the overview of the economic situation. I'm just, I'm amazed, uh, at the work that's gone into this, at the cooperation from the private sector, at, um, just the sheer number of hours that, uh, have been spent, you know, basically unpaid hours for most of the members, um, that helped with this report. Uh, so I am very, very grateful for that. Um, I, I think that, uh, the conversation we've had this evening and at last week's meeting, um, gives the administration and the members of, uh, the future members of the advisory committee for these loans good guidance as to what we expect to see, as to what's important to us. And I agree with Councilmember Volan that I would like to see the final, you know, criteria, um, that will be used. But I also agree with Mr. Crowley that this is something that, um, people who are more expert in the field and, and, and who can act more quickly, um, should take over. And I, I do not feel like the council needs to have somebody on that team. So, uh, I really look forward to, um, hearing back. And, um, I know that it's kind of scary for the people that are on the ground and going to be, um, uh, doing the call out and then evaluating the applications because this is something we've never done. Um, so I really appreciate, uh, also, um, their work that's coming up, uh, in advance. I'll issue my appreciation for that. And, um, I look forward to hearing how it works. And I think it's very smart to do two tranches. Um, so that, uh, in the second go around, uh, things can be improved. So thank you and I support this and, uh, good luck.
Thank you, Councilperson Piedmont Smith. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I will be supporting this as well and, and very much appreciate the work of all the members of the working group who, um, put in many, many hours developing this. And it's an impressive, uh, report and amount of work you all did. So thank you. I, I do still think that it's not unreason, you know, the experts are the R F, R R F advisory commission. Those are the people with expertise. I wasn't advocating for a council member there. I was advocating for a council to be involved in the decision-making process of the city, uh, similar to the technical advisory committee or other, you put the hospital reuse, for instance, or others. I don't imagine that as slowing a process or making it any less nimble in any way. It's just, um, It's just a person to help advocate for what council or committee of council or whatever thinks is a good direction for this, but that's, that's okay. That's not what it sounds like we're going to be doing. But I did want to emphasize a couple of things, one of which is that I think the criteria, I think that in the draft, Report Three, Question 34 in the appendix of the potential application says, what are, what other forms of funding have you or will you apply for? And then in parenthetical, you must certify your application for other funding in future steps of the process. I think that's probably the question that Mr. Underwood was referring to. And I think if, based on the discussion tonight, if we're wanting to tease out if people have applied for and are pursuing the paycheck protection program, or perhaps, as Mr. DeBrocker noted, pursuing, you know, encouraging your employees to get unemployment for some reason instead, because that's the better option, given the context of that business, that we should really say that and ask that and say we are going to prioritize businesses who are actively seeking ways to, you know, protect their workforce. So I just think that could be improved a little bit, perhaps. And I'll just stop with that, except to also say, I appreciated Mr. Paul's comments earlier, and I think our goal as we emerge from this public health crisis should be not to return to business as usual, but to emerge better and stronger, more sustainable, both environmentally but also socially, you know, seeking with the Thrive sub-team that the report recommends to improve conditions for for workers and and find avenues to prioritize a more equitable economic system here in Bloomington moving forward. So that would be my hope for the Thrive team. And I mentioned last week, I think that's a an entirely appropriate place for a council member to be involved as well, since it's very much about policy, which is, you know, largely the council's bailiwick. So I'll leave it there, and thank you again so much to all the folks working on the report. Really do appreciate it. You've all done an excellent job, and I'm happy to support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Looking to screen to Councilmember Sims or Rosenbarger, do you have final comments? Okay. No? Okay. Anyone else? Oh, no, no. Anyone else? I'd like to take a brief comment here. I have already said what I think about the program. I so I'm going to be supporting it. I think that the work that's been done in a very short time by people due great pressure has been tremendous. I think that I speak for my colleagues when I say that. I do also think that Mr. Paul is right about at least one thing. We are not going to be able to go back to business as usual. As usual, all bets are off, the world has changed. I don't know what it's going to mean three or six months from now. It's all we can do to get through this crisis right now. The next couple of weeks are important for the the future of basically my entire district, let alone the vibrancy of the city as a whole. So I don't know how we're going to be able to go back to business as usual anytime soon. So I am grateful and gratified to see the creativity with which everyone is responding to this crisis. We are doing our part. I'm going to make a prediction. I expect that there's going to be a return to the food and beverage tax before we're done. That $2 million is not going to cut it. I'm looking forward to seeing how the first two tranches are spent, but I expect that we will need to dip further into the fund. I'm not discouraged by that from the perspective of somebody who still supports a convention center. I think we're going to need that kind of new development to get our economy back going, and that the simple demonstration that the community can raise this kind of money to build a convention center means that there's hope for it still, but that we have to rethink everything else about it. So I don't have compunction, if if the administration wants to come back and ask us for more dollars for the food and beverage tax, if that's what it takes to keep the community from losing one of its greatest resources, then I'll be supporting that. But for now, I think that the approach they've taken is the right one. We've asked for an appropriate amount to start with. I'm not afraid to put more in. But, but I said enough. I'll entertain a motion.
Call the question.
Call the question.
The motion is second. All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
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 All right. Will the clerk please call the roll on appropriation ordinance 2001 as amended?
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Absolutely, yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Is that everyone? That's everyone.
That passes 9-0. Mr. Crowley and company, good luck. Keep it, keep in touch.
Thank you very much.
We're to go now to legislation for first reading.
Mr. President? Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2009 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All in favor, we need a roll call vote from the clerk.
Yes.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Will the clerk please read?
Yes, ordinance 2009 to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code. Sorry.
It's late.
It's late. Entitled Administration and Personnel and to Grant Authority to Act in accordance with Declared Disaster Emergencies Regarding Amended Amending 2.22.030 Entitled Employee Policies in Complying with the State of Indiana's Declaration of Disaster Emergency under Indiana Code 1014312. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance 2009 addresses the operation of city government during the public health emergency resulting from COVID-19 and amends employee policies to allow the mayor to order some or all employees of the city of Bloomington to continue to receive pay during the regularly scheduled non-overtime work hours for the duration of an emergency declared by the governor under Indiana Code 1014312. Then, for the duration of this emergency, it invokes Indiana Code 1014317J, which in part allows political subdivisions to weigh procedures and formalities in regard to certain of its functions and gives the mayor the authority to implement those measures as long as those actions are consistent with that statute, the governor's executive orders, or any other applicable law, declaration, order, or decree. Also, for the duration of this disaster emergency and to the extent consistent with guidance from the state board of accounts, it authorizes the controller to approve the payment of all necessary city expenditures and defers the actions of the boards and commissions which normally review and approve these expenditures until after the emergency and alters their role at that time to the review and approval of the controller's actions.
Thank you. Under nor, under code, I have an obligation to see that a motion to refer this to a standing committee precede a motion to refer it to a committee of the whole, but I believe that a majority, and I join them, that committee of the whole is appropriate here. So I'd like a motion to suspend the rules so that we can refer to committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second.
With a motion in a second, this will be a referral to committee of the whole on April the 15th. Will the clerk please call the roll? It requires a two-thirds vote.
It starts with you, Councilmember Volan.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
That's approved. So we will hold a committee of the whole immediately after the regular session scheduled for 6:30 on April the 15th to hear that ordinance in committee of the whole. Mr. Sherman, do we have any schedule, council schedule issues?
I'll, I can take that one.
Mr. Lucas, would you please do the honors?
Just, just a few reminders, we do have a meeting scheduled for next week where we will have a regular session, as you just mentioned. The council will be taking up two ordinances related to the UDO that have been postponed up until now, but the administration has, has asked that the council, council take that up. So you'll see that at the regular session next week, and that'll go out in the packet this Friday. You'll also be discussing the ordinance that was just introduced at a committee of the whole immediately following that regular session. And I did want to mention the budget advance meeting that's coming up at the end of the month, but that's still scheduled for April 29th. I assume we will still be in this virtual mode when that rolls around, so you'll get more information before that meeting comes, comes up, but I just wanted to make sure you still have that on your radar. And that's all the scheduling matters that I wanted to touch on.
So just to review, next Wednesday, the 15th, we will have a regular session where we'll hear the final vote of the UDO with the old maps, followed immediately by committee of the whole, where we'll hear this emergency ordinance. On April 22nd, we'll have a special session where we may take up the emergency ordinance on second reading. And that the ordinance on the 15th, the UDO ordinance, actually state law allows planning ordinances to not need two readings. Is that correct? Okay. So we may be able to handle the UDO ordinance with a simple majority on the 15th without a second meeting. And then on April 29th, city budget in advance 2021.
That's all correct, and I know Planning Staff has, has made the case that those two ordinances are essential, even though they, they're not controversial in the sense that they, they simply convert the new, the old zones to the new zones and it makes some non-substantive textual changes, but the effective date of the new UDO is tied to these conversion maps. So Planning has, has requested that the council take that up, and you're exactly correct, that state law allows the council to, to do that in, in one regular session without needing any special procedures.
And while there are many other things that are not essential right now, the ability of the planning department to function is essential. So I will be declaring the consideration of that, of UDO ordinance is essential so that we may consider it under the emergency. Any other scheduling issues? Do we have any work sessions scheduled soon?
Not next week. I think the next one's.
That's enough for now. Okay. With that, is there any other announcements or a motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. I'm not calling roll call on this.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Good night, everyone. We'll see you on the 15th.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.[1733.42]